Good evening, everybody. This is a special city council meeting and we're going to begin by calling the role, I believe.
Alderman Berthwaite, here. Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Bruce Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Vavel.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Jeez. Alderman Fisk. And then Alderman, well.
That's a question.
We're going to start with here. You guys aren't sitting in your order.
The mayor is not present. So, the mayor's public announcements. The mayor pro tem will make an announcement that Mayor Hagerty is not with us this evening. And city manager, public announcements?
Only to say, Madam Mayor, members of the public, Alderman Wilson had a family issue come up this evening, so was unable to join us. And Alderman Fisk is ill. She indicated she will be watching on television and she made text in questions and comments, so if she does, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'll get your attention and text her. And Mayor Hagerty is out of town.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. We have one person signed up. I don't know if everybody knew about that. And if anybody else wished to sign up but did not know we had achieved, let me know. The person on our list is Ms. Hartman. Hoping for clarification.
Hoping for clarification. Hi, I'm Mr. Hartman.
Could you stand?
I don't have any idea where the cameras are, but I know they're here. And I'm sure you could be heard. So, hello. Hi. I want to start by saying two things. First, you've been keeping long hours. I want you to know that the public appreciates. Thank you. Second, I realize I'm probably at the wrong meeting. I intended to come to the human services meeting two days ago, but I got the dates and times and stuff, so I'm here at this meeting. Hope the comments are appropriate for here. So you may know, I've spoken at a couple of previous meetings asking a set of questions about the baby case. And I read in the most recent issue of the Roundtable that there had been a letter of regret sent by the city manager and the police chief, which is a great start. Somehow it's a great start. Delighted about that. But I still have lots and lots of unanswered questions. And I know that usually there isn't a chance for you to respond, but one of the hats, many hats that I wear is I'm a teacher. And one of the things I tell my students is, if you're confused about something, it's likely that lots and lots of other people are as well. So please ask questions. So the questions that I have that I think might be easiest to sort of start answering to the extent that you're able to, and maybe you could put something in writing for the public, is like, why did this review process go through all of the stages it did? You know, the OPS, the police chief, the CPA committee, and then back to the human services committee? Like, what was that cycle about? Why did it go through all those stages? What was done at each stage? Who has authority here? Like, what's going on? Why? Like, can you explain this?
I think the answer to all those questions is more complicated than any one of us can answer. But I think you deserve an answer. I think the public deserves an answer, and I think you're going to get that. I think it's being worked on. We talked about that the other night.
Oh, great. Okay. That's terrific. So, again, I mean this in a really friendly way.
And we do have the list of questions that you gave.
Okay, yeah. And the chief will answer them November 9th.
You gave it to us in writing. Yes.
Yes, okay. And so, I guess that was another sort of follow-up question, is that the way that the public can know that the, you know, I don't know.
Lots, a lot.
Lots and lots of people out there. How do their comments get conveyed? I mean, they get conveyed to you, but how do they get conveyed to all the people on all of those committees? Are they all listening? How, like, what happens to that?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Please.
The issue of the baby case will come back to the Human Services Committee at its next meeting on November the 6th. So at that time, the chief will make a presentation, and I think will answer many of the issues that you've raised. Alderman Fleming asked specifically the questions you raised. He responded to by the chief, and so that will happen as well on the 6th.
Okay. All right. So we're looking at November 6th, and in general, just the way that the city council functions is, if there are 50 people making comments, how do those 50 people know that those comments got to the right people?
And again, the comments that occur at the city council are for the city council. So...
What if they're for one of the committees?
I'm sorry?
What if they're for one of the committees?
Again, when there's public comment at a meeting, it's for the body that the comment is made to. So if you're in a council meeting, it's for the city council. If you're at a committee of the city council, it's for that committee.
So people usually go to the committee in which is dealing with their...
Oh, I see. So there are separate meetings of the CPA council, and I see.
So people go to the committee that contains their questions.
All right. So I think that I've taken up enough of your time. Like I said, you've been taking up long hours, so I really appreciate it. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. I'm going to go back to work and leave. So I'm going to go back to work. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Bye.
But don't forget the human services meeting. Make a note.
November 6th. November 6th. Okay. All right.
And since you are my ward, and I know you, we can talk through the process where complaints go.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. All right. Thanks, everyone.
Anybody else hearing? No other people. We're going to move on. So the special order of business tonight is equity training. And I'm going to introduce to everybody Pat Effion, who is then going to introduce our speaker and trainer for this evening. Pat?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, members of the city council, city manager Bob Kowitz, and city clerk Reed. So yes, I will introduce our speakers. So let me tell you a little bit. What we'd like to do is, I'm going to introduce them, but then I'm going to give an introduction to our topic tonight before turning it over to them. We hope that this will be, you know, engaging, that you will ask questions as we go along the way. But what we're really seeking to do here is to make sure that, first of all, we all have the common language, even though what we're talking about, before we can progress to where we're going. So I'd like to introduce you first, a gentleman that I have worked with for many years, Ken Christman, who is currently the associate director of...
Associate vice chancellor for admissions.
Associate vice chancellor for admissions at IU Fort Wayne. Ken has done a significant amount of work with universities, but also with presidents, congressmen, around the issues of equity, inclusion, and diversity throughout his career. And then the lady with him is Dr. Chrissy Krieger, who has done her graduate work, her PhD, around special issues of emotional intelligence, self-awareness, and human development. They both have worked with university communities to build inclusive communities. How do we get students from across the spectrum, not only onto the campus, but how do we get them integrated into the setting where they can have full access and the greatest amount of resources for student success? They also work with faculty on the other side to make sure that faculty have the adequate training and support that they need, not only to be integrated into the campus, but to be supportive of students who come from a multitude of backgrounds. So I am thrilled that they're here. I think they can give us a broad understanding of some things. But I want to start...
You're going to help me with that.
Thank you. I am going to start with a couple of definitions so that we understand, like I said, we have a common understanding of where we are going. And so, the first definition I want to give is diversity. And as you can see, I mean, I think when we talk about diversity, we often get to the issue of race. But diversity is much more broad than that. And it goes beyond even protected classes. I mean, we have a diversity of people in the room. Some of us wear glasses. Some of us, you know, some of us prefer buttoned up rather than zip up. So diversity, I want to make clear, when we talk about diversity, we are talking about the broad spectrum. Then we go on to, and the other issue with diversity is, when we talk about diversity, we have always attacked the issue of diversity, which has resulted in lots of Band-Aid programs, but doesn't allow us to get to the root of the problem. So diversity is what we want. We want to increase our diversity, we want to enhance our diversity, but equity is what our goal is. So the other piece is looking at equality. So equality is the state of being equal. Everybody starts with a pin. Everybody has the same training up until they receive their pin. And so now that we're getting ready to take the test, everybody's on equal footing. That is ideal. That would be wonderful, but that's not the reality that we live in. And so then we turn to equity, which is the fair treatment. It's a fair treatment, access, inclusion, opportunity advancement for all residents. We're talking at Evanston, we're talking about residents, and staff as well. And so, in order to reach this, in the diagram here, what you see is, this is equality. Everybody gets a box. And so, but look what happens when everybody gets a box. We have this young man, who's a, perhaps a young lady, who is in a wheelchair and can't access that box. And even if they did, given that they're in a seated position, they still do not have equal access. And so, in this picture, so equality is what we want to avoid. We want to move toward equity. And as you can see in this picture, we note the needs of the individuals. This young lady in the middle needed two boxes. And so we address her by giving her two boxes, and so that she has an equitable view. And the person in the wheelchair has handicap ramp accessibility, so that they too have now equal access to the resource that's in front of them. This is what we are striving for in our city services, how we provide services to our residents, and in how we provide programming, budgeting, is we want to be working from an equity framework, that we want to give people what they need to get to where they're going. So in order to achieve equity, we have to identify and eliminate barriers. This is important in understanding the work of this office, as we get lots of people who want us to fix the diversity issue. It's important for us to help the community understand that our goal in achieving equity, the equity that we're attempting to achieve is in our programs, our policies, and our procedures, so that residents will have equal access. And to improve equity, we have to increase justice, right? And so that means that when we recognize that a situation is inequitable, then we have to think about, what can we do to make that situation equitable? As you can see, can you go back to that last picture?
Absolutely.
If you look in this picture, this is not the answer, right? But this gentleman now is without a box. Some would perceive that as something's been taken from him. And so that's the battle of trying to achieve equity, is oftentimes people feel like they're losing something. Thank you. And so, that's where we're going to start. You can go to the next one. Equity, it invites all people to be active. If I know that I can come in the room and I can sit at the table like everybody else, I'm more likely to come back again. And so, it's a process that builds inclusivity and a sense of inclusivity. And so, going back to diversity, we want diversity. We want to increase diversity. We want to celebrate diversity. But that diversity will only be sustained if we're an equitable community. Any questions? Then the empowerment piece. Empowerment comes not because, well, so it's the authority or power given to someone. We don't like that language, but the reality is, it is given to us. And sometimes we can take advantage of what's there, right? But in order for me to earn a college degree, somebody had to give me access to the school. And once I get access, what I do with that access, I'm empowered by that. So our job as the city is to help recognize where people need, want to be empowered. And then we open those avenues or doors so that they have a desire to become a part of our community. Once we begin to build that community, people become, they become stronger and more confident. The woman who made her public comment tonight said, "I'm new to this, so I don't know exactly how all of this works." But she's been empowered to show up. She asked her questions, hopefully got a response that will allow her to come back and now become more and more engaged in our inclusive community. So that's what we're going for. The challenges of this model is, number one, when we deal with issues of diversity, those are really quick fixes. Diversity work, there are a lot of quick fixes, but that's because we're simply putting a Band-Aid on them. I think you've probably heard me say, "We have hungry people, give them a block of cheese." We get a local grocery store to donate cheese, we hand it out, and we all go home and say, "Yay, we fixed it." That kind of work with equity is not the work we want to do. There are plenty of people out there who can serve and meet those needs. Our job through the Equity Empowerment Office and as a city is to dig out the root causes that created that need, and then to address those so that people don't have to depend on us, but rather they're part of the decision-making processes. So oftentimes, we have unheard voices, which means that our process needs to include ways to hear those voices. So if, you know, somebody's coming up tonight, and I say, "Wow, we didn't have anybody in a wheelchair tonight." I bet they would come if we had a wider elevator. And we go build a bigger elevator, and they don't come, and we wonder why. It's because we have spoken for them without figuring out what they need. The second is, if they do, if people come and they're underrepresented, they oftentimes don't feel like they can find voice, they don't have voice, "I'm uncomfortable speaking, I'm shy," whatever that is, then they're underrepresented and may not come back. And then, along with unheard voices, we often speak for people, for other people, right? We often speak for other people. I don't know if you've ever been in a situation where someone in a wheelchair has entered into the room, and we begin to move chairs for them or ask them what their need is, as opposed to letting them tell us what their need is. So how do we keep our residents engaged, especially those who are very outspoken? Those who are already engaged? How do we keep them engaged while encouraging them to allow others to surface and come and speak for themselves? And then, lastly, we're challenged by policies, laws, ordinances that limit participation. And there are all kinds of policies and ordinances out there that are on the books that limit participation, and so our job is to root those out and to seek those out. And finally, is there another?
Nope.
Thank you. And finally, so that you understand, we are looking to provide equity through our services programs, staffing. We want to make sure our staff understand how to treat all people regardless of who they are, what they look like, how do we interact with them in ways that are meaningful and engaging. And then we're looking at our policies and our procedures. That's where our focus is. And that's where my presentation ends. Anybody have any questions? All right. With that, I'll turn it over to Kenneth Christman.
Good evening. I have been thinking about, should I stand or should I sit? Can I sit at the table with you?
Please.
I'll do a few things. May I have this chair here? And good evening, and I want to, I just told my colleague, and Pat, you haven't heard this, but I used to live here.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Glad you leave.
I lost my job. I made a bad mistake. I'm still paying for it. But somehow, the nuances of life bring you back to good places. And so, to the Honorable Mayor, to you, Madam Chairperson, to our city manager, Pat, and to you, Alderman, and members of this community, I want to say good evening.
Good evening.
I lost my job years ago. I was working in Naperville, Illinois. I needed a transition, and my father said, "It's not time for you to come home. You haven't finished your work." And I said, "But I lost my job." He said, "You need to figure it out." And so I came to Evanston, and I ran a daycare for the summer. So a lady named Val Summers, I don't know if any of you all remember her name.
You're related to her.
But Val Summers saved my life years ago. Evanston looked like some huge city that I couldn't disaggregate from Chicago or the rest of the areas. But when I came here, I found a lot of love. I came here, I was about 120 pounds less than I am now. When I left here, I was 10 pounds heavier because I was eating too much Hecky's barbecue with french fries and dipping them in the sauce. But that is to say that I've had, I had a great experience here in this community. And had it not been for Evanston, when I lost my job, and having that little, what seemed to be a small job, that Val Summers said, "Every child matters." And every child and every family deserves the opportunity to be appreciated and to esteemed. This is a great community. So here I am years later, coming back. A dear friend, we both work at Big Ten institutions, but the heart of the matter is, is that we're real people. I had a distinct opportunity to bring along with me one of my esteemed colleagues, Dr. Chrissy Krieger, who in her own right is a very student administrator, an expert on emotional intelligence and engagement. I work at a university, and we talked a little bit earlier. It's called Indiana University, Purdue University, Fort Wayne, or IPFW. IPFW offers degrees from Indiana University and Purdue University. So when you graduate from that university, you don't get a Fort Wayne degree, or blue and white, as our school colors are. You either get a degree from Indiana University, and it looks like it would if you graduated from Bloomington, or you graduate from Purdue University, where you get a degree that is gold and black. And so, we're one of only two institutions in the country that don't offer our own degrees, that being IPFW and IU PUI, which is in Indianapolis. And so, next year, we have the great leadership of the immediate past governor of the state of Indiana, Republican Governor Mitch Daniels, who has come and assumed the leadership for Purdue University over the last four years. And I was just sharing with Pat earlier, and Chrissy has heard me say this before, if I've ever worked for a college president who's doing a stellar job, it is Mitch Daniels. Go figure, to lead the governorship, to have been potentially to go to the White House. But he said, "Higher education is a place where I want to lock in and dig in and make a difference." And so that may drive you to some questions tonight, like, why Ken? Why Chrissy? Why are we sitting here? Why educators? Why not other city administrators or what have you? What I've found traveling 20 states and working throughout the country in the Caribbean is that no matter where I go, people are not different as much as they are similar. They follow Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Everybody needs a place to sleep, needs something to eat, and something to belong to so that they can connect and build their lives around. And hopefully, in doing so, they make themselves appreciable assets that contribute to the base of a city, of a ward, of a community. And what I would like to give us a word tonight is, a culture. Evanston is a culture. And I want to give you that word, and have you, instead of thinking of a city, think of a culture. And when you think of equity, I'm sure you all are, if not now, or at one point, or you paid off your home or what have you, you know what an equity loan is. You know what it is to have equity in your home. You know what it is to buy an appreciable asset and to put something into it. And if you take good care of it, even though the market sways, somehow, some way, what you paid for now is more valuable than what you started with. Not true with a car. Buy a car for $20,000, drive it off the lot, it's worth 17, couple percentage points or more, and you have a depreciable asset. And so this city is an appreciable asset. And you and I have a small window of time, you larger than myself, to have impact, to build this thing called equity. And so, one of the things that we know is that, and this will probably get me in trouble with Pat, but I want to tell you what the research says. Diversity training generally doesn't work. So if you walked in the door tonight, research says, you've already had a thought, somebody's going to confront you with some things that maybe you already know, you may learn something that you don't know, you're going to hear some things that maybe you want to hear, or you wish somebody else would say, or you don't want to hear. And so you've already got some walls, generally somewhere in the vicinity, and if things get too hot and don't feel good, we kind of wall up. In other places, we open up and we cascade. And so, I want you to think less about training and more about equity. And I want you to assume and to know that no one can walk into your community, not me, not Chrissy, and be the experts that you are. You were elected, you were selected, you were corroborated by a vote, and that makes you, by the essence of your peers, the experts in this room. And so who you are is important. What you do and what you bring to the table is diversity. It's more than race, it's more than gender, it's more than any of these things. But to get to equity, it's to build relationships to be able to understand, okay, I'm elected, and this is my ward, but what other gifts and graces do I bring to this city amongst just that that I represent? And so, equity deals with perception. We see things, and we think we know what we're talking about. We look at people, and we think we know where they're coming from. We see or hear people speak, and we make a decision sometimes about how we're going to interact, or where we're not going to interact, or what have you. I want to submit to you, the equity takes place, and really the goal is, is like Pat just shared with you, with the young boy that's standing there. One needs a box. One isn't tall enough. One is tall enough. We're all uniquely similar, yet we're uniquely different. And so equity is about fairness. It is about striving for balance. It is about, just because you have access doesn't mean that somebody else doesn't. And how can we assess and go through different lenses to be able to see not only who we're serving, but as a university, we often talk about, it's not the students who's come, it's the ones who we don't serve. Who's fallen through the cracks? And to be able to measure that and assess that and work with that. So I want to talk to you about some words about appreciation. Ask you a question. I don't want you to answer it now, but do you appreciate each other as a group? Do you appreciate what you bring to this table? This table of transformation? This table where critical decisions are going to be made, and critical ears that are going to be able to not only listen, but are here, but to listen? And so we want to talk about also, how do we reward our community? And I want to submit to you today that equity, you are equity, and that what you bring to the table is a reward to this community. Because for every one of you sitting at this table, there are people who aren't even thinking about being elected or selected. And there are people who are calling you and asking you to fix problems and to use skills that you probably don't even know that you have, or that you may not even be equipped to. But this particular table, and this city, and this municipality, together, however you came together, brings equity to the table. And so on staff, with the city, when the council recognized that disparities exist within the organization, and we all know them. I like to use this term with diversity. We all have our pet diversity. People come to me at the university, and they will say things, and they will ask me things, and then all of a sudden, they'll talk about, "Am I going to run a program for black males?" I say, "Well, yeah, we could do that, but I also like to talk about Alvin Pousant and white male rage." How can we build equity for white males who now feel disenfranchised because they don't have what they had, say, 20 or 30 years ago? And when you say that, you watch body language, people start moving around because all of a sudden, they look at me and they expect me to advocate for this. But you all are diverse enough to advocate for each other and advocate for different things in the city that are respective to your wards, but at the same time, reflective people that you serve. And then this table is about, how do you share that? What happens on this side of town and that side of town? So let's go to the next. There's a difference between inviting someone, has any of you all heard this? There's a difference between inviting someone to dance, to the dance, as opposed to inviting them to dance. And as a group, again, I don't want you to hear the word "training," but think about it. Do you all invite each other to dance? Do you all communicate across the table? You might say, "Oh, yeah, we do. That's what we do every time." But sometimes, things can get so formal and in such a context that you can talk past each other. And so, this is an opportunity to dance for the city and not only for the people of this community. Bring others to the table. I just heard it tonight, when you talked about the person that may come here that's disenfranchised for one reason or another. You know when we go to court, what do they do? What do you have when you go to court generally? What happens with the judge? Come on, talk to me. When you go to court, what are you going to?
Do you swear to tell the truth?
A hearing, okay? And a hearing, the judge is there to hear you, okay? But it takes advocacy in a courtroom so that the judge will listen to what you have to say. And what comes with that? Representation. An attorney. So you can stand up at a courtroom and say whatever you want to a judge, and a judge will nod, and if it's not procedurally in context or what have you, they will move on and move to the next point. But when an attorney, a representative, an alderman, an alderperson steps in the room to advocate for different concerns and brings them to a common table, then listening takes place. So a hearing is a good thing, and a public hearing is a good thing, but just like the young lady was standing here today, her question to you was, "Who's listening to young lady was standing here today, her question to you was, who's listening to this concern? Are you with me? So there's a difference between hearing and listening. In diversity training, in equity training, in inclusion training, it all starts with acceptance, affinity, loyal, loyalty, rapport, association of relationship. And generally what happens in critical race theory, have you ever heard this thing about if you're in an elevator and the doors shut and you're going to get in the door, the elevator comes up and you walk in and you see a male, a male of a different race or ethnicity, they talk about how the person, if it's a female, the person will go to the other side. We all in less than a second erect walls and put up petitions based on gender, race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, any kinds of things, religion. And so what your job is every day is no matter what the person is, no matter what's the situation is, you have to achieve an equitable perspective that every person counts and every voice matters. And so we want to take you through just a couple of things and not take a lot of your time, but more in particular, let's go to the next slide. And that is, people who undergo training usually shed their biases as a question. Are you going to be different after you leave here tonight? Okay? You can be if you give yourself the option to be, but most people are sitting to listen to hear something that they either agree with or they don't agree with, or they check off, I've got my question, I'm going to hang on to my question, I'm going to be talking when you get done talking, then I'm going to bring my question up. But the question is not for me, it's for us individually. Are we going to choose to at least take something that moves the dime a little bit further down the road so that we can listen to one another? So let me just give you this real quick. Researchers have been talking about it, and this is called bias and self-awareness. And while people are usually taught to respond correctly to a questionnaire about bias, they soon forget the answers. If somebody asks you a question and you gave them the right answer because that was the public answer, and once the camera was off, or once the radio was down, or anything was off, or the person was out of the way, you just lost your perspective? Because we know what to say now, but we also are scared to say certain things because we don't want to offend people. And so the last one is the positive effects of training rarely last beyond a day or two. Somebody said, well, why are we doing this then? It's because we need to have and build toward a conversation that when we look at our strategic plan, when we look at our rules, when we look at the things that we're doing, if we look at why people elected and selected us to sit at this table, that we don't become forgetful and we only represent me, my, and I. But at the end of the day, it's about my ward and our needs and how those needs work together to create a better city.
Is this interactive?
What they have asked is that we share a presentation and we'll make some time for this. And so I'll have some points you can, because I definitely want to hear what you want to say, but we want to get this on. So is this yours here?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So a couple of things about equity, what does an equitable organization look like? What does an equitable city looks like? Let's go ahead and run those through. And just a couple of points, and then we're going to give you some things that I think not only will bring some questions to the table, but to get us to thinking. Because our job is, if you're sitting here thinking, okay, we're going to have a training, and at the end of the training, then we're going to have all the answers that we need, I want to submit to you, the answers are already at this table. They're in your minds, they're in your hearts, they're in your experiences, and they're in the minds and the hearts and the experiences of those that you serve. So what do we need? Clear commitment to creating an inclusive organization. Values that contribute, the values, the contributions and interests of all employees, all volunteers and all persons in this community. Well, we can't do all. That's why you've just been selected to serve a portion of this community and to come to this common table. The employees and the volunteers ought to be reflective of diverse social, cultural groups. We ought to demonstrate multicultural competencies, we ought to not only be able to speak different languages, but to speak in different cultures, to feel comfortable. Tell me your name again, I'm sorry.
Melissa.
Melissa came up, immediately started the conversation. I came in the room, I was immediately assessing the room. I was doing body language analysis, I was watching who engaged, who didn't engage, who talked. You came over, we had a phenomenal conversation. Next thing I knew, something that I'd been worried about, which is how do I get students to come from Evanston? How do I get students from Illinois to come to Purdue, Fort Wayne? Melissa said, everybody knows Fort Wayne. Everybody knows Fort Wayne. We chuckled and said, yes, you know, somebody knows who we are. Because at the end of the day, sometimes our communities are so insulated, we forget what's outside. And so just a couple of things. We act on our commitment, we demonstrate multicultural competencies, you did that tonight. You communicated across cultures, you didn't let anything hesitate, you engaged, you looked, you communicated, you asked questions, and I already feel a connection. I think when I leave here, you'll take my name and I'll have your number and we'll talk. If you ever come to Fort Wayne, wine's on me. All right. Includes participants in decision making. I think that's what that lady was asking here tonight. How can I be a part of the decision making? And you all know this, that was one person. But how many phone calls do you get a day? And how many people are looking for you to what? Solve problems. And so I want to say to you, you're already doing equity, you're already doing inclusion, it's just to begin to tweak that lens and see, hey, I am being equitable. And if I do this, then equity will be even broader. Okay, let's go to the next. Mind the middle. While some organizations show slow progress, everybody say slow. Here's your interactive piece, come on, you didn't say slow, come on, you want some interactions? Come on, say slow with me. It's not something that happens overnight. Things take time. People know change is inevitable, but they don't like change. And when things change, people what? Feel threatened, and they hang on, and they dig in, and they pull back. Here's the problem with what you all are doing, you can't afford to do it. You don't serve you, you serve the public. And here's a real macro thing and then we'll move faster. And that is this. What happened Sunday night was terrible. It's the worst mass shooting of modern time. And the question is, every community, I thought about you when you walked through that door today, you were so warm and engaging, I felt like I was at home, I felt like I got a key to the city today. But what if that happens under your watch? Every day we have to think, now, are we ready? If a tragedy hit this ward or your ward or this city right now, are you ready? Are you connected? Are you equitable? Just in this room, let alone now we go out into the city and do it? Are we in a way, are we broadening our concept of leadership? And we're going to give you some tools and some ideas so that we're ready. So the journey to equity is a what? Somebody say slow again. Takes time. Everything happens in time though. Okay? And it's a steady race. There's some other quotes that I can give you, but it basically says, the one who wins ain't always the fastest, sometimes it's just the one that hangs in there because sometimes life happens. But you and I, every day, got to put on our equity cap and we got to think, how are we being appreciable assets and building this community? One person, one problem, one situation, one program at a time. And it requires support at every level. If there are people who opt out of meetings like this, or if they see this on tape and they don't go back and look and say, hey, we do need to have a greater equity discussion in our community, and you only opt in when you think it's politically correct or you think it's going to help the pocketbook or not? Some people don't have a pocketbook to pull from. Come on, talk back to me, say, give me a thumbs up. Some people have a nut pocketbook, it's not about that, it's about what tools we bring to the table. Let's spin through this. So embrace your plan, you have a plan, right?
Of course we do.
You have a plan. And I was getting in the elevator and I saw, is it eight points of things for the city? And I took a picture of it. And the first thing I said to Pat, where's equity? She said, you just voted on that, did that. Come on, give yourselves a hand. Come on, y'all got to come on, you want to do some interaction, that's big news. Or, let me ask you this, is it just going to be something you put up on a board and say, we did that? You got to do the work. So embrace your plan, incorporate the principles of equity across administration, the functioning units. Do city employees have to, as a part of their annual review, discuss diversity or equity and how they help make this place more equitable? What's the slogan to make Evanston the what?
The most livable city.
The most what?
The most.
You can't answer all the questions, I'm going to have to look through, y'all are so quiet. The most what?
Livable city.
And how close are you?
Real close.
Real close.
I think we are.
Okay, somebody else answered, how close?
Number five in the nation.
Number five in the nation, yes.
We've got some work to do.
What's work to, how about you, brother?
Doing some.
Doing some?
We've got quite a bit of work to do.
All right. I'm not going to ask you because you told me you weren't going to participate. You getting close or you worked?
We have some work to do, but I'm proud of Evanston.
What?
I'm very proud of Evanston.
Very proud of Evanston, my friend.
I agree with Robin.
You agree. See that connection? And you all said something similar, but what I felt was, you weren't just saying it because somebody's looking. I think you believe that. And so you got to actualize your plan. Be inclusive in your practices, integrate equity into your discussions, put it on your agenda. Have your city leaders put it on their agenda. How are we doing with equity? What are we doing about equity? Don't run from it, put it on there. And it may be, you're taking a step forward and two steps back, but talk about it. Because communication solves a lot of things, eh? Are you with me? Why do most marriages break down? Communication. Why do most employees get in trouble on jobs? Communication and expectation. Let's go to the next slide. So very quickly, conflict theory. Y'all have conflict in Evanston?
Yes.
Any conflict come to this table?
Yes.
So don't, you know what? Excuse me, I just say, shake your hand. You started with, I ain't saying nothing. Yes, we're together, we see eye to eye. So don't get caught up in Karl Marx in the mid 1800s, but I want you to see, Marx understood, so don't get beyond the person where you are philosophically. In terms of conflict between social classes and notably the conflict in capitalist societies between those who owned the means of economic production, which was the factory, the farm or whatever, and those who did not, the workers. And what we say in America right now, we got the haves and the have-nots. Two or three percent of the people controlled 90% of the world. We know those discussions, but in a city, in a ward, if you look at it with equity and not just race or gender or the normal things that we have to see, and we see, but you begin to see those appreciable assets that those people bring to your ward and start to use them in a discussion of not just listening to what's going wrong and what needs to be fixed, but helping them to empower with answers as to how they would answer that, you transform a discussion that turns into something else. Conflict theory, subsequent thinkers think they've described different versions of conflict theory. A common theme is that different social groups have unequal power. Yes or no?
Yes.
Isn't that really a big part of the struggle in any given city? Some people have the power, some people have the authority. What's that saying? You heard that saying? Power concedes nothing to nothing but money. What do you do when somebody doesn't have the resources? You know where they come? To the city. They're looking to the leaders to do something. And what we've got to do is not only do something like you all are already doing, but we've got to empower people to take the reins, to embrace themselves. Because equity doesn't just come because you're a man or a woman, because you're black, white, Asian, Latino, whatever. It comes because you're an appreciable asset and you have to develop skills so that when you face problems, you have some tools to fight with. And a lot of times, the people that we're working with and working for, they don't have the tools. And so investments in training, investings in development, I heard tonight, I'm telling you, I'm taking that idea back to Fort Wayne, I will take that police officer you introduced me to, he can come, that guy's a national speaker, what is it called?
An officer and a gentleman.
An officer and a gentleman? My gosh, do you all know how unique and special? Have we heard that in our travels?
Definitely not.
Everybody say Evanston. I'm going to give you a word for Evanston at the end of this. And so different social groups have unequal power. Conflict theory has been used to explain diverse human behavior, there's that word diversity, such as educational practices that either sustain or challenge the status quo, cultural customs regarding the elderly and what have you. So we know that conflict comes out of our own life situation. I promise you, the problems that I had when I lost my job, Evanston had an answer. But here I am 20 years later, and now I'm a part of helping others to answer some of the questions that people will need in this community. Let's go to the next. So what is conflict? I want y'all to get this, if you don't get anything I say tonight. Conflict is not often what you're mad about, what you're frustrated about, or what you're trying to plead or advocate for. Conflict, I want you to see a pyramid, is a series of unresolved disputes that started down here, and one little thing can take it up to here. So conflict doesn't happen at a singular point. And I'm sure you're sitting here right now thinking of things going on in this community, things that have made them a torchlight, or things that you're getting ready to deal with on your agenda, or my city manager here is having to think about day and night to manage crisis or to keep something from blowing up. And it's not one event, it's been a series of events, probably not related to the event that you're dealing with because somebody didn't feel heard and listened to, acknowledged or something done about, and now here you are, elected and selected and sitting here as a leader, and stuff the folk are mad about, you think it's the subjectiveness, it's people's objective to be heard. So what you're dealing with today is a result of what did or did not happen in the past. I know I'm taking no long, but I'm going to get you out of here in good time. Chrissy's got some great information for you. Civility. I've listened to the news, I'm a news addict, I'm confessing. I read three different newspapers, I listen to different news outlets, I used to write for Gannett News Service, I, news, 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 I want to hear what the difference is. And the only one that I keep hearing, I mean, I've heard it all day, is this image of our national leader pitching paper towel. In his mind, he was there, he was helpful. But the optics of it don't look the same because they're what? Interpretation. But at the end of the day, if, and I'm not arguing politics, it'd be very clear, but if that's the best, or that was within the limits of what that person can do, what we didn't see were all the people who were already pitching in and making things happen. So out of every bad story, there are good things that happen, and a lot of times, it's by unsung heroes like you sitting at this table. Come on, say these words, I am.
I am.
Want somebody to say you are?
You are.
And say we are?
We are.
An equitable city.
An equitable city.
You got to say it before you get to it, you got to plan it to be there in the future, you've got to embrace it now, and even though there are problems, problems are only your opportunity to keep working on those equity issues so that we are this close to being the most what?
Livable city.
Oh, now I feel y'all's energy, here we go. And so with that, what I want to say is we got to be civil, we got to be listers. And I can't come to you and ask you to listen to me, or you come to me and ask me to listen to me, to you, and I've already determined what I'm going to do or not going to do for you. That's not listening. Or you come to me and you, because you've heard that I can do X, Y, and Z, that I'm going to do that. It could be as a leader, that we talk about the problem and we get some other ward persons around, some of you other leaders around, say, what's going on in your situation? What's going on? How can we solve this and create multiple pockets of good things? So equity at the end of the day is making good things happen in our city. You do that every day, don't you?
Try.
All right. So Chrissy, we got to have courageous conversations, and we've had a number of them, haven't we?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so we've been working together. We disagree on stuff, and we advocate for students, we advocate for faculty members, and I just want to tell you, sometimes some of our biggest challenges are, we have experts who have attained the highest level in their field, but we have to help educate them or talk to them about communication. So it doesn't matter, my daddy always said it this way, degree, or my mentor actually, Dr. Charlie Nels in Indiana University, degree doesn't make you educated. You can have a degree in physics and still not know how to treat somebody. Human grit, human toughness, human interaction is what equity starts with. Chrissy?
Absolutely. So what we want to do is think about, and if you'll allow me to sit as well, and I will stand a few times, but what we want to do is have you think about what's at the center of conflict. So many of you kind of, as Ken said, I saw and heard your wheels turning, and many of you said there are a lot of conflicts. What's at the center of most conflict? Not types of, but why? Why does conflict occur?
In what setting?
Difference of opinion.
Difference of opinion? Any setting? And what are you seeing?
Dissatisfaction.
Dissatisfaction, absolutely. Others?
Not being listened to.
Yes.
Helplessness.
Absolutely.
Perception that we can do things that are, that the magic
Wave of magic.
Really, really aren't possible.
Okay.
That we, that we can't make affordable housing happen for everybody who needs it. That's the biggie.
Absolutely. Heavy stuff, right? And there's, to me, at least to us, and some of the things that we hear both when we think about equity, is there's one thing at the heart of everything each one of you just said, and that's emotion. I feel, we feel, you feel, our community feels, my area feels. And all of those feelings are solely something that each one of those people own. You may feel some of them for each other, with each other, but there's one piece that kind of is around the center of that and the place that it's challenging for all of us to embrace equity, especially when we may not feel the exact same way, right? So one of the pieces that we hope to kind of impart and to have you think about in terms of both conflict and how to help your areas, both at this table, this is your area, and where you areas, you go back in this town, is to have some emotional intelligence, so emotional literacy. Ken made the comment, and I think he is so right on, that each one of you are the experts in your area. You're the experts about this town. Unlike, can I never lived here? As a matter of fact, until about eight years or so ago, I had never been in the Midwest. I came to this crazy little place called Fort Wayne, Indiana, from Seattle, Washington, and had grown up in Arizona, right? So Fort Wayne, the people, the Midwest, the culture, and Ken used the word culture many times, was very foreign to me. And I will tell you, one thing I learned very quickly is the power of emotional intelligence and inclusion. There was no other place that I had been in this country, especially on the west coast, that I felt more included than in the Midwest. You guys have something special here. And if you've ever been to the Seattle, the Arizonas, and I am not putting them down, I am who I am because of that, those places and those people. But this area tends to include people more than you would ever think from an outsider's perspective. However, it takes these things and what I especially kind of inculcating into a new culture, knowing what you're feeling, being able to manage those feelings, using it then as self-motivation to be empathetic to each other, and then that's how we manage our relationships. If this, and I apologize, I forget her name, whomever the woman was that stood up. What I loved about your responses, you heard her and you listened to her. You couldn't give her the answer she wanted right now. It wasn't a yes or no on how to fix the problem. But it was, you are heard, we're gonna get there, here's when we're gonna get there and here's how. And that's something that we don't do a lot for each other because we think that's very simple. But if we look around the room and you guys are carrying some heavy stuff from your areas, right? Similar, we carry very heavy stuff from the students that walk in from your areas to our institution. One of those things we have to be able to do is perceive their emotions. That can be very difficult, that can be very easy. Some people wear them here, I do. You'll know when I'm tired, mad, sad, glad, it's all right here. A lot of people, however, don't. And what I think your beauty is in your positions is the ability to listen and draw that out of people. But then what happens when we get them? We have to integrate those emotions into both this table, into your collective work. And then certainly, we have to understand ourselves. And though, yes, it's my dissertation and it's my life and I love emotional intelligence, I am not the most emotionally intelligent person. It takes a lot of work and it takes a significant amount of self-awareness, and that's the only time that we will ever get to equity. We can have an appreciation for diversity, we can be civil, we can build a box and give you a half a box and me a full box 'cause I'm a little shorter than you. Maybe it's the reason I wear heels. Whatever it is, if we don't understand where we come in self into that picture, we're never gonna be able to fully get there. And that is, I hope, one of our challenges to you today and as you move forward. In doing so, there's a really easy approach to conflict. And this is something that we try to teach students, we've taught faculty on our campus, we've taught staff members. Acorns, pretty easy to remember. Anybody from Ohio, Buckeyes, eh, kinda looks like a Buckeye. But you're not from Ohio, and you're from Illinois, you might like that reference. But we're gonna, so we'll keep calling it the Acorn Approach. It's very simple. Accommodate employee differences. And I have to commend you, we've heard it, what, I've known you for going on three hours now. I met you and I would share the same viewpoint as Ken in that you created an extremely welcoming environment. Your signs and your symbols are everywhere that accommodates people. But that is one of the greatest ways to get through any sort of conflict because it leads to creating workplace choices. I loved the fact that I think I asked you, do you have bottled water? No, and here's why, right? And I loved that answer, you made a workplace choice. And hopefully, that's something that you all can kind of get into and back up.
And they have ionized water.
Right.
And it's in the back and it's great.
I know, I loved it. You operate from a flexible management style. Your willingness to bring people in who aren't the experts in your city, but to come in and share with you something tells us that you are flexible. And hopefully, that is something that you then take back to your areas. You respect competence and initiative, that those are huge. You're all doing that 'cause you're here. And then finally, then that allows you to nourish retention in your areas. So yes, you can't solve the biggest problems in the world or in your specific area, but you can certainly nourish people's desire and want to stay. And if I can share anything about, again, this area and the people even that I've interacted with today, you make me want to stay. I think Ken talked about that, you know, a lot with previous times that he lived here. You have that warm, welcoming environment. I don't really wanna go back tomorrow. I love Fort Wayne, but you have that. And I hope that your areas and you share that with each other around the table. Ken?
You believe in it? 'Cause alls we're doing is telling you what you already know and giving you a different set of lens. Has anybody ever been to the eye doctor? Better through lens one, lens two, lens, and they keep changing and your vision keeps changing. You keep having greater needs. And so the bottom line for leaders is that if they can do, if they do not become conscious of the cultures in which they are embedded, those cultures will manage them. And I can guarantee you right now, at least you've had at least one thought, and those who are watching tonight and who will see this, well, you don't know what's going on here and you didn't hear what happened and you don't understand it, but keep using that triangle, that pyramid. Any conflict that we have in our city is a result of unresolved disputes. And so from this table, we have to ask the questions and do the listening and empower our city administrators and leaders to be able to do the tough things they need to do to make sure that our community in a holistic way is being the change that we wanna see. Edgar Skine is one of the great theorists. And Edgar talks about artifacts espouse values and assumptions. We all have things in our cities. Right now, one of the most common things we've heard is the removal of these statues of different parts of different cities. I don't know if you've dealt with that here in Evanston, but different things mean different things to people. We all have different parts of town that maybe we frequent or don't frequent, but those artifacts are critical and necessary for those who are in those areas. We have values. We wanna be the city that we say we are. It has to be the same in one ward as it is in the other. It doesn't mean that they have the same living condition always, but it does mean that we see multiple groups at the same time, and that's why this table exists. And then we ought to be able to make some assumptions, but we can't over-assume. We want this to be a safe city. We want this to be a table where people can communicate and talk. We want to be able to have problems that come up and to be able to talk about them, not just to solve the problem, but to build equity. So that the next time the situation comes up, we have a frame of reference and something in our toolbox and an experience that was positive even out of the midst of a negative, because here's the challenge. Bad stuff is gonna happen. Somebody asked me why and I'll tell you. Human beings. We're all failed. As strong and as great as we are, we have shortcomings. So whenever human beings are involved, as much as we go to address this or you are harping on that issue, there's something else over here that needs attention. And the question is, how do we bring all that together and build something, as Chrissy says, with an emotional or a, I like to call it, an emotional intelligence for the city? So here's what Edgar Skine says, and I say this whenever I present a lot of times, I probably get on Chrissy's nerves saying this, but there's a difference between leadership and management. And most companies have to figure this out. And the city and the alderpersons, or the aldermen, if you will, who figure this out will have a greater chance to transform this city, not from this far away, but like you're saying, to just, if we could do a couple of things that just move the dime, it may make the difference. And that is this. Lead people, manage objectives. And what most people do when they get elected or they get put in the top chair or what have you, the only person in this room that has manager title is you. We're supposed to be leading people to greater ideas, to greater ways, to develop skills, to work through education and training programs. And I know that that's not everybody and everything, but we have to work together to maximize the city's thing because most people manage people and lead objectives. And guess what happens when you do that? People get ticked off because you're going to a job and you come into a room like this and instead of listening to what people are saying, you're trying to manage your personalities. Well, we know Ken's gonna get loud and talk fast. Now, you know Chrissy's gonna be quiet and it's very, and she's gonna say a lot. And we're all sitting waiting on it. Just like any family, dysfunction. How many of your families have dysfunction? Okay, all hands go up here. And dysfunction takes place because everybody takes their role and they do the same thing. What I tell people at my different tables, when I'm working in administration or whatever, or when we have coaching sessions, we say, do something different the next time. You never speak up, you be the person to speak up. You're the one that's always got the answer. I saw something the other day, what I put on there on the Facebook. The people giving the most advice have the most problems?
I thought that was pretty good.
Go ahead, laugh with me. Lead your ward. Lead the people to something greater while you're listening, but don't try to manage each other. That's no fun. I am me because of the experiences that I've had and because I have great friends and colleagues and because also some of the trouble that I've been in or the things that I've done and the failures that I've had. But I don't need to be managed. I wanna be led. And I believe you all are leaders. And Skine would say, don't manage each other, don't manage your city, lead it. Last mayor's job, no? And especially, and I don't know about this mayor, so I'm just saying that, if he has a management mindset and you follow that, you gotta be within the confines of the rules and regulations. Y'all did it very well tonight. But never forget that leadership is inspiration, it's empowerment. It is, it is the strength in me because I've been elected that I'm gonna make a difference and I'm gonna do something. So be willing to be different, be willing to do something that... Go ahead. Systems thinking, if you wanna read something, it's a little bit dated, but I think it's good. Peter Sanjay wrote a book called The Fifth Discipline Field Book. In my studies and my research, every time I go to do something, I have to go back to Edgar Skine. Lead people, manage objectives. There's a difference between leading and managing, okay? Lead people, manage objectives, and systems thinking. And that's what a city government does. You think within a system to get things done, you use programs and services. You get people who don't know about those programs and services to those services, to those resources that the tax base has allowed for us to provide, whether it's ambulance service or police service, all the way down to that summer job program, whatever it is, we gotta get people to what's within our system. We gotta think like a city, we gotta think like a community, we gotta think like a culture. Everybody's personal master. Here's the thing, so Chrissy and I sit at common tables, and here's the thing. I'm a filler. I'm an intuitive male, which is counterintuitive when we sit together because she kept used to say, why are you having that thought? Why do you think you know that? And then, like I tell some people, I'm psychic. In the church, I say I'm, you know, prophetic. Well, I feel things, I feel energy, I feel people, I read body language, I get it. She wrote a dissertation on emotional intelligence and what did she say? I'm not the most emotionally intelligent person. She's abstract, she's smart, she's quick, she's tactical, and she's detail-oriented. You put the two of us in a room on a presentation that's changed eight times before we got here, because I'm feeling, we're sitting in the room upstairs. What are you doing? I said, I'm feeling the energy coming in the room. Because what happens with diversity training, I'm gonna speed it up. Most people walk in the room and they've already had some determination about what they're gonna get, what they're gonna give, or what they're gonna ask or what they're gonna not ask. And so I wanna say to you, the answers are in this room. Sanjay talks about mental models, how we think about things. He talks about building the shared vision, that's a part of that eight-point, now nine-point plan, and team learning, that's what you're doing today. I wanna tell you, you're already doing the things because I can go call ten city leaders throughout this Midwest tonight and ask them if they've done what you've done here tonight. And every last one of them will say, no, we didn't. We didn't have a table like this. We didn't have a training like this. And I'm telling you, no matter what problem is in this town, no matter what's frustrating you, no matter what people are disenfranchised, and even those that you think are living on the mountaintop still have problems as well, but I am telling you, cities don't always dare to do what you did tonight. And I wanna commend you and I wanna reward you. Let's spin through this and keep moving. And so transition theory, we're gonna come to that. And we basically are talking about individual transition. Before I can expect you to be different, I have to be willing to do something different. Before I can want you to appreciate something about me, I need to learn to appreciate something about you. My mama said, build a bridge and get over it. We've got to continue to do the things that you're doing because you're the city that has dared to do this. So if something bad happens tomorrow, you're already a slice down the road. But we gotta keep pushing, we gotta keep hunting. Go ahead. Transition theory.
Oh, I'm sorry. So one of the things, and we loved that you guys were able to say, yeah, we have some work to do. I think almost every single one of you said, we have some work to do. So one of the best ways to get there is you all have to be the leaders to make that transition. And you can make it in several different ways. Nancy Schlossberg, she is a higher ed theorist, but this is extremely applicable to any situation. You're talking situation, self, strategies and support. And it's cyclical for that reason. There is no way that you can transform a situation without transforming yourself. There's no way that you cannot be transformed as self based upon the situation. And then support and strategies obviously are the piece that makes that whole. So Ken, I think, is perfectly, he illustrated them here and he'll unpack them in a second. But one of the things in order to be the change and the transformation that you all wanna see is that you have to change behavior, the roles of people, what you learn from them, and then back to that concept of emotion and changing perceptions. And Ken, do you kinda wanna talk about where you see those things applying?
I'll make it simple. I do this, I'm bivocational, so I'll let you know a little bit about me. I have two sons, I have a twelve-year-old who's probably gonna pay linebacker for the Bears. He's twelve, he's five foot, almost nine, wears a size thirteen shoe. Three sacks last night and about ten solo tackles. He's a beast and a straight A student. But a lot of times when I talk with him, and I have an eight-year-old, but I'm an old man having babies, that's my joke and I'm gonna stick with it. But I'm bivocational, so I'm a pastor. And the best way I do this one is a situation, we gotta know where we are in every situation. We gotta be aware of our own biases and our own limitations and our strengths and our ability to contribute. We have to understand where, even if it's happening in your ward and not mine, how that could potentially affect you, and so we need to talk. That's why when stuff happens, you need to call each other. Do y'all do that? Don't answer that. Yeah, you do. Okay? And then strategy, taking action. So here's transition theory, are you ready? Put your hand like this, look at the clock, and here's transition theory. You're either going through something, coming out of something, or about to get into something. You're either going through something, coming out of something, or about to get into something. And if you're like me, you're going through something, coming out of something, and already into something. That's how life is when you're an alderperson. It's not your life, you're going through the lives of other people. And what I see in this room tonight is a lot of sincerity and a lot of hope about this community. But you can't do it alone. We have to be able to look in that camera and say that every person's gotta carry their weight. Every person's gotta use the best tools that they have and utilize. We're not a perfect community. We concede that, but we've got a lot of great things going on and we need everybody. So just remember this, if you don't get anything else, you're going through something, coming out of something, or about to get into something. And what I have found in leadership is it's not just you. You feel every pain that your persons feel in your wards. And we just wanna continue to tweak up the equity that when you hurt on your side, you hurt on your side that we all hurt at the same time, Chrissy.
So we wanna give you five tools and leave you with that sense of five ways that hopefully you can kind of both increase equity in your table here, your own mindset, and then certainly in your wards. And Ken, the first tool?
Which, by the way, I don't know of many cities that have a position like you serve. Google it. And I think you'll come back again and say, you know, we're not perfect, but we are doing some things. And she didn't ask for the endorsement. I'm gonna tell you, I know her work at Indiana University. And I know what she's done in the state, and I know what she's done throughout multiple municipalities. This is a change agent right here. And so she's not the answer to anything, but she's got everything that you would need to help jumpstart the things that you wanna do as a community. Very quickly, I'm gonna send this to Pat. Pat, you can share this presentation. This is called The Implicit Bias Test from Harvard University. This is something that's very non-threatening. This is something that you can go into your computer, y'all don't mind if I take my jacket off. You can click on this link, you can take this test. And what it's gonna do is it's gonna blink up images every minute, every second and a half. Blink, blink, and you're gonna have to answer. And it's gonna say, do you see, for instance, a face of a person? Do you see a person who, black, brown, Muslim, what have you? And it's gonna ask you, and you're gonna keep answering. It's gonna take you about twenty minutes. It's gonna take you about twenty minutes, you do it all in the private, and then at the end of it, you get this test and it tells you how biased you are and who you're biased against. And so Pat said, we want some tools, we want some outtakes, but we also want to do some things that empower people through learning. And so when we give you this link, all I'm saying is take it. So I took it and then I said, okay, I don't agree with some of these things. I know I'm not that way. So I took it again and I said, and I screwed it all up, I'm biased about everything. Just try it, it's a good thing. So I want you to look at it, the implicit association test, number two. Uh, this tool stretches your comfort zone. Chrissy, you want to talk about this?
So obviously this goes back to that notion of emotion and that it is present. We will never be able to get rid of it and it's honestly the thing that encompasses bias. Our life, our stories come into that. So we want you to stretch your comfort zone. Many of you already have. There, there's really no way that you could be in these positions without having done that. However, then you also become comfortable in that place. So stretching that comfort zone to really go out into your communities and get the people, Ken said it perfectly, Pat said it perfectly, that aren't at the table, that aren't the ones speaking up, that do have a lot to say, that just don't know how. And we have to go find those people. So don't be afraid to question yourself in doing so. Be open to change. Um, don't react defensively when someone says something you don't want to hear because most often when they have something to say, not positive. Those people aren't coming here and lining these walls and saying, though I love the, the first thing she said, right? And she's extremely emotionally intelligent. Let me give you something positive first and then let me hit you. And I don't mean that in a bad way, right? But that's exactly what we all have to do, we stretch that comfort zone to be able to take both of those things in.
Engage, learn and share. Make a conscious effort to learn more about other individuals, let me say that, as well as their group or where they're from, recognizing that the interaction with one person does not predict or explain group norms. Let me tell you something I did a couple of weeks ago as a part of my diversity work. I'm always looking to put myself in situations that are uncomfortable. So I went to a dinner months ago, breaking a fast with my Muslim brothers and sisters. And so then I went back to a fast breaking a couple of weeks ago. Was talking to a gentleman. I'd seen him three or four times. And finally I said, you know, you're a fascinating individual. He goes, well, that's very nice of you. And instead of asking what I would consider a dumb question like, where are you from? And I, you know, I knew his religion was different than mine. I said, can you just tell me one thing about you that you would consider to be unique or that maybe I wouldn't know about you? He says, I'm a retired medical doctor. I just left Washington DC. I've been working in the trauma center for thirty-five years. And talking to this guy, but I never heard anything medical out of his mouth. We got done talking, he said, brother, because you've invested time to learn about me, will you please go pray with me? And as our friend said, I had Scooby Doo more. I said, oh no, uh, yeah. And he walked and he took my hand. And he said, listen to me, you don't have to believe what I believe and how I believe. I'm just asking you to kneel and pray over a common difference. And when I say whatever I say, what we say in the Muslim language, all I'm asking you to say is my God is great and he is to be reverence. So I did it. But then they stood up and they said, god damn. And, and for a certain time, I wasn't used to that. In the Methodist church, we stand up, sit down, they stand up. Well, the, the, and he, and I'm telling you, it was a powerful moment. He grabbed me, he lifted me up. And he said, brother, we are strong together. Thank you. I walked out of there a changed man because I experienced something that was completely out of my comfort zone. Was diametrically opposed, but I've been sitting watching images and news and talking to people and this Muslim brother didn't try to proselytize me or change my world or anything. He just said, we have the common gift of prayer. Can we just kneel and pray together? That's religion, separate church and state, whatever. It's no different when you're dealing with money. It's no different when you're dealing with politics. Dare to be the one to interact with others and have those vulnerable moments and ask those questions because what I have found over and over and over again, there is more that unites us than pulls us apart. Next question.
Oh, just real quick, one of the easiest ways to do that, that we find very accessible to people other than saying, what's your name, where are you from, what's your story? One of the ways that we see, we just say, what's a fun fact about you? That, that's a very accessible, non-threatening, it doesn't, it could be super personal, it could be religious, it could be my favorite color is blue, right? It could be any of those things, but that's something that gets you into those people's minds in a way to engage. Then one of those things, as you kind of continue that on, is expanding the way and to whom, with which you speak. That is one of the ways and probably the reason Ken and I became friends and colleagues over the last eight years. Ken has said things to me that I tell you what I never wanted to hear and vice versa. And there is a mutual respect in that. I'm sure you all have probably done this at your table, but if you haven't, find somebody who can be your accountability partner, especially as it relates to bias, equity, moving you along, that, that continuum, that line of really engaging people around you and not making things equal, but making things equitable. It is very, very different. But, and I love this last question, are we better off with people thinking it and not telling us? And certainly that answer is no. If I were you, and I, and I think we share a lot of commonalities as a leader, I want to know. It may not be things that I want to hear. I may not be able to fix it right away, but I certainly want to know and have those courageous conversations. If you've not seen the book, it is literally called Courageous Conversations. It will open your world in the way that you deal with people on a much deeper level. I, I invite you to look at that as well.
Call it a common reader. Everybody reads it, you put it on the agenda, you block out fifteen minutes, you have the conversation and you move on.
And this last one i- is, kind of sums everything up in the way that we deal with and look towards making things equitable. If you mess it up, you gotta own it, clean it up. And that's sometimes the hardest thing for any of us in any position of leadership is to say, my bad. I own that, I did it wrong. Take ownership i- in our relationships, personal, professional, and then certainly with the people and with whom we lead. And Ken, you want to talk about that last thing, the bias?
Yep, bias occurs because our fundamental way of encountering the world is driven by a high, wild pattern of making unconscious decisions about others. My mother, um, there was a book thirty years ago called Quicksand in Passing. She's a very fair skinned African American male, female, who used to sit in rooms and people assumed she was a white woman, so she would hear things. Until her little brown babies would show up, especially the cutest one, the youngest one. And then people would treat her differently. This is thirty years ago. But the equity of that is now thirty years later, she's in her mid seventies. Four of those people that she works with, worked with for years, she still talks to them almost every day. They share things because they build equity, because they learned to work through the difference and the assumption and the biases and they found out some of the heck they were raising or people were pushing or whatever, that we all got some wrong in the game. We gotta own up to it, clean it up and move it. Let's go to this next one, we're about done. Donna Brazil, how many of you know Donna Brazil? We're on our way to taking some questions here. Donna Brazil met, and Chrissy kept asking me in our way, we gotta plan this out and do this now. What are you gonna do with Donna Brazil? You've asked me six times over. I said, I gotta do these Donna Brazil stories. No, but why is that in there? So because she's hardwired administratively a certain way and I am the one who drives, who has the GPS and doesn't use it because I can remember how to get there. And then we're lost and then, you know, you know what that story's like. Donna Brazil met Thurgood Marshall, Supreme Court Justice, at a diversity breakfast in a city, a municipal city that was just having a breakfast to bring in a prominent speaker and they wanted the youth in that city to meet them. Look at Donna Brazil now, she's doing things on a national level. She says, we have to open up all the doors and all the windows so that we do not restrict people and the opportunities that they may have. We all have to have a seat at the table. And one of my passions about this, that I wanted to use her is because I believe in my own experience, I've seen the suppression of women in leadership. So I have made it a personal goal of mine to embrace and uplift women in leadership. And Donna Brazil, regardless of her politics, is one of those women. And that's why I could have used a man or something else, but some things, you just gotta get a woman to do it if you want it done right. Is that right? People say, oh, that's a different comment. Yeah, that's putting out there to be able to say, that didn't feel good maybe to some. To some, they may have chuckled, but we've gotta be able to be open and not slam somebody because we disagree. Women in leadership is a big thing and listen, hold on, go back.
I'm sorry.
And Donna said at the age of nine, when she worked to elect a city council candidate who had promised to build a playground in her neighborhood, the candidate won, the swing set was installed. And after that, she made a decision because she met Thurgood at nine to go into politics. Make this run and we're done. Diversity, she says, is critical to the success of a community. Put equity there. And it must start with a building, with building an infrastructure supportive of its development. You can't sit here at this table and then you have leadership who doesn't support equity, diversity and inclusion. And you can't just hire somebody. You gotta walk the talk, talk the walk, you gotta make it happen. She acknowledged that there can be objections and fears about diversity or equity, but said it's a zero sum game. People will find a way to get others more actively engaged. Number one, we cannot shrug off naysayers who frown upon diversity. She says, quote, we have to keep talking to them. We cannot write people off. We must keep communicating is the word I want to use. Why you and why now? Read this with me, what does it say? Because what? Tomorrow is not soon enough.
So we want to leave you with an equation that hopefully is, is one of the ways that you can get to greater equity. And you can define what equity is and where you see that in your, in your work, in your day, in your professional and your personal. So forward progress, right, is equity, towards equity, is a new perception of yourself, so self-awareness, emotional intelligence, plus the perception of your city and looking at it differently or through the same eyes, through the eyes of those next to you, around you, and plus a clean slate. That we know there are things that we're never going to be able to solve wholly and holistically. What we can do however, is start from a clean slate and begin to build them to be more equitable. And if we do it at home, literally in our own backyard, then we're going to create a larger and more holistic change.
And make Evanston the city of envy for the rest of this state. And make it a beacon of hope for the rest of this nation. And I know you have problems and I know you have frustrations. I know you have worries. But we would never walk in here with the ignorance that we came to solve a problem with experts already at the table. So thank you because you weren't trained tonight. You were engaged. We felt your hearts, you felt our energy. And I saw the change in this room. You were quiet at first, but when I asked you how close are you, you all acknowledged. We may not be where we want to be, but that gone it? Close. We're close. And my challenge to you is if you work harder together and you will take and wipe some of that slate clean. I'm not saying some things can't be wiped off without you talking about them, okay? We started this with building strength and I want to say, we are Evanston, Evanston strong. That's who you are. And that's why we want to be able to look into that camera and say, we know we have our problems. We know I have our shortcomings, but this is not a team of managers. You are a team of leaders. And your job is not just to lead this city, it's to transform this city. You're this close. And for anybody who wants to share a concern, what I found out tonight is if they will come and work within the process and speak within the context, you've got some people here who really want to take you. So thank you on behalf of two humble people who got to drive to a fabulous city to engage some folk. And our hope is that we've said something, we've encouraged you, that we've left you with the expectation that you are the leaders. And if there's work to do in the future, we'd love to come back and do something even deeper. Thank you, Pat. Thank you, sir. Thank you to your mayor as well. Any questions or whatever you need us to do, we can do that as well. Did you forget a question?
I have an answer, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you too.
I just want you to know there are three Indiana graduates and two Purdue graduates in my family, just so you know. And, and two of them live in Naperville.
Amen. That's wonderful. So my joke for my IU friends is I who? And per what? No. There's a great rivalry, like there is amongst, amongst a lot, but, um, Northwestern is a part of that Big Ten, that Big Twelve system. Uh, we get called out into the communities a lot because we're educators. And we're the unusual suspects, you know, people like, well, wait a minute, you know, you get a, you get some big company to come in and they tell you, you do X, Y and Z and it's all fixed and you're looking at numbers. And, and that's a part of it. But there's no greater difference than the human capital that sits at these tables.
It's true.
Questions though? If not, I mean, we're, we're just thankful.
And I, I want to thank these two for coming and, and mostly for hearing. Uh, I really did struggle, I, I haven't said this to anyone, but I struggled with the idea of saying city council training. Because training, you know, I, I really struggled with that and I appreciate you saying that. Is that, um, for this equity effort, it's about leadership. And it's about us understanding, um, as, as, as a leadership team, it's about us understanding what does it mean to lead people? And particularly when we have these deep communal issues that are often difficult to talk about. Uh, so my hope is that, uh, when we leave from here, uh, we will be, uh, offering up over the next couple of weeks, a series of immersion experiences. Sort of like what Ken was talking about, so that you might, uh, go into a community that you're not familiar with or into a space or a situation and experience that community with the hope that we will build a sense of, uh, what our community, what our community is like, what our community needs and that this will be an ongoing conversation about how do we engage, how do you all, how do we engage the community in a more significant way so that we can really hear those voices? And so I see this very much as an ongoing conversation that I hope that you will be willing to continue in with us. Uh, but if there are no other questions or comments, I think we can turn it back over to Laura.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very, very much.
You know, and then again, this is, this is just the beginning. And I think, I think it was important to, 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 you know, we're really intensifying the efforts now with equity and empowerment and appreciate you all taking the time. We'll welcome your feedback about this and about your ideas of what makes sense. It's, I think you all have said before how much you enjoy sitting at a table like this.
We do.
And how it's, how it's much more conducive for conversations and, and training. And you'll be back here in a few weeks talking about affordable housing. But if you would like to do more of this, to talk about a, one of the issues, I think, you know, a couple dozen things I took away from, from this tonight, any one of which could be a whole evening's conversation. So I would look forward to your feedback and Pat does as well.
I can, I can't imagine this having taken place in the council chambers. That would have been totally bizarre.
Right.
No, I just wanted to break the ice and, and share with you, uh, because I, I would be interested to get your feedback right now when it's pressed. I definitely came in with, with my biases and I tend to be arrogant and what am I gonna hear now? Being the black baby. And so thank you for acknowledging that. And just throughout the day, months leading up to this, we all get our phone calls and folks who lend their opinion to what equity is and diversity and the other experts, all eighty thousand. We have to listen to any, on any given day. But I'm thankful, I, I needed this reminder. That I've always said it, like if we get together and whatever we agree to, we can manage our issues when we're all on the same page. And I think as leaders, we need it to be reminded of that. So I want to say thank you. And then also to Dr. Effie, I said last night, she has the big boulder to carry around and everyone has their own opinion, attitude and thought on what she should be doing, what she is and isn't doing. And I'm just thankful that we took this first step and Tawali as well. I mean, we've all received our, our criticism. He was brave enough to, you know, fight for the position that we all agreed to. So here we are now, all of us in it on camera, and this is our first step. So I hope that we continue to take steps like this in the council.